The key I get to this because school board finance is very cumbersome. It's very different than like Nick said. It's the the numbers and the understanding of it with the relationship with your SBO is to me the number one thing. But I think we always have tried to make every dollar count and be fiscally responsible with the budget. I feel like that is what we owe to our community and to all of our stakeholders. And being financially responsible and lowering the tax rate as much as we can. Since 2019, we lowered the tax rate from sixteen seventy-five per thousand down to twelve ninety-four. And we try to do that and keep the budget as high as we can over time.
Yeah, budgets. I had an extensive experience in dealing with budgets on large scale and small scale construction projects. As part of my point, I will be diligent about review and ask the questions where issues present themselves. I will focus on ensuring the budget is aligned with district goals. And I intend to engage stakeholders to ensure alignment between the budget and the district's collective bodies.
So my role as CNO at the hospital, budget is not something that I'm unfamiliar with. As well as utilizing coming tax dollars and identifying revenue sources. That's something that's really, it's that constant battle of making sure what is coming in is enough to cover what needs to go out. And so developing and managing those budgets across all line items is important. The other thing that's important is, as Casey stated, the relationship with the school business official. That's vital because school finance is not, as Nick said, your checklist at home. It's much more complicated than that. And so identifying what trends are going on with our specific budget as well as budgets with districts around us. And then what historical perspective has the budget? What does the budget look like from a historical perspective? How are we compared to last year at this time, five years ago? What are we projecting for the following year? And there's so many variables when it comes to that, especially when you consider open enrollment. And when it hits October eight fifteenth and a new student opening rolls to a new district, the money that was provided to the original district does not follow that student. So that eighty-five hundred dollars, for example, does not follow that student. So that doesn't mean where you don't welcome them and give them the education they deserve. It's just that creative thinking and how we're going to make out for that lack of funds.
All right, thank you. We're about halfway through our time this evening and I'm going to transition into questions from the audience. The topic that garnered the most questions so far is about the bond issue. And so I'm going to split it into two questions. And the first question, we'll start with you, Casey. And we're going to look back at the most recent school bond issue before we look forward into kind of what your position is as a candidate going forward. So the question that I'd like you to answer first is, did you support the most recent school bond issue? Why or why not?
Yes, I did. I feel like the way that we went about building a CTE building outside of the school, that it's kind of a chain reaction. It would open up classroom space because by moving out the CTE, the trade programs that are in our shop, that would open up that area to move the junior high down from like three-story building. And would also then open up classroom space in the three-story for more elementary. So it was a way to work within the blueprint of our current building, but try to provide as much extra space for all classes that we could.
Just, did you support it? Why or not? Uh, yeah, I did support the recent bond. I believe that I, my biggest driver in that was the trades program and the vocational spaces. I can believe that there was too much involved and put too much on the community at one time. And that's why it was met by a lot of opposition. Going forward, you know, we've got to focus on one thing at a time, I think, as a community. I think we'd be more received, better received that way.
I also supported the most recent bond issue. I think it's important to consider, we are voting yes or no when it comes to that bond, but we may not agree with every component of the bond. And so I think that's something that's also important to consider this. Just because I said I supported the bond does not mean I supported the entire construct. But globally, I did support the bond. And improving space for the CTE education, moving some of the classes to help with elementary and help with middle school, those were what primarily drove me to support the most recent bond.
I also supported the most recent bond issue. I don't think I'm on an island here that we would like to see, you know, improved facilities at our home. Whether my children would even use these facilities, I don't know if they would be completed by that time. But I think smaller class sizes utilized in the shop area for the junior high area and, yeah, the CTE building, I think that's a great idea. And as well as the other facilities. But I think where this, where it didn't follow through was we had a lot of information, a lot of money on the line. And I don't believe that everybody was fully informed on how this was going to affect the community. And when people aren't sure, they will know. I may be wrong on that, but that's my opinion and that's how I feel.
Next question goes to Grayman first, and this is now forward, still dealing with the bond issue. Would any of you be willing to make a pledge tonight that if elected, you would not vote to put forward any budget or project bond measure that will increase public taxes? Or alternatively, would you support a bond issue and for what purposes?
There's quite a bit in that question. It goes in different ways, I suppose. You know, without knowing what the bond is for, it is up to say one way or another. I do believe our taxes, you know, in terms of districts and areas, we're not doing too bad. However, that doesn't mean we want to pay more taxes. It's really more about needs than wants. And so, you know, I can't say one way or the other, but also I don't have specifics. Don't have an opinion without specifics. Correct?
I would, I would say that I also can't make a strong opinion or a strong statement one way or the other because we don't know what is the bond for. How big is the bond? What are we trying to accomplish with that? I think what potentially this question is trying to get to is what measures can we take to either avoid a bond in the future? Or how can we approach when a bond, or if a bond does come? How can we ensure that there's appropriate education around what the end result of said bond would be? And so while I think that's a valid question, I think we have to take it even a step, we have to take a step back and ask ourselves, how can the board strategically, if collectively decide that a bond is the right move for the district, how are we going to ensure that transparency communication is put forward?
I guess I might have broken record here, but I'm not sure that, I can't vote for yes or no on something that we don't. And the same exact bond that we just were presented with, yeah, then I would vote yes. But I believe that, like I said before, we need to have more information out there. We need to have better understanding of what actually is going to happen, not what could happen. But, yeah, as far as saying yes or no on a bond that may come up, I would have to have all of the information and how much, you know, how much dollars is going to be there. Nobody wants their taxes to be raised. I mean, I don't think anybody wants to pay more money. But things need to happen in this community. You can't stay stagnant. Also, we're going to go backwards and we're going to lose the small-town deal, so.
I guess I feel the same. I don't know exactly what, you know, what would be on a bond. I feel like going forward, basing the bond more on classroom space, education would be the big push. I would hope that we could do it maybe in stages over a few years, which would probably have to happen anyway. But I would support and always do support making our facilities better and improving classrooms for our students, making more room for them. I don't want to pay, you know, to raise taxes. I wouldn't want that to be. But there always is improvements that have to be made to the buildings. In the past, you know, we're trying to make improvements every year with just remodeling the third story and the second story the last few years. So I do vote yes for improvement of our schools. I don't know exactly what that looks like, but we're always looking to listen and know what the community wants.
Next question goes to Gray. So we've touched on facilities a little bit, but I want to kind of dive into that. What do you see as priorities for the school district facilities in the next five years?
So priorities for the school district for the next five years?
Specifically for facilities, I'm sorry.
Specifically to the facilities. So I did speak to that earlier when I spoke about physical space and facilities being one of the biggest challenges. So can you, I guess, what are we, can you give me the question again? I guess I don't know what we're specifically.
Yeah, what do you see as the priorities for the school district? So is there facilities that need to be updated? Where do you prioritize the funders used for facilities?
Okay, so the third floor and the second floor have been renovated. The first floor, if I'm not mistaken, is next on the docket for this coming summer. So that is tremendous. It's a facelift is what it is. It doesn't have to give us more space. It just gives us nicer looking space. And I think that's an important piece. Were in the elementary maximized as it is? I think we really need to look and see how we can maximize covered areas of the building and what that looks like. And I think that's been touched on a few times this evening. But specifically, the renovations that have happened, while good from a cosmetic perspective, they still don't give us the needed expansion of space.
Well, I'll be pretty short with this. I think we, our priority should be to maintain and minimize class sizes. I think that helps teachers in education. And utilizing our facilities properly. We do have some space in this school. We just need to use it the way it benefits our classrooms and our teachers and our students. So I think we need to focus on those first.
Sure, I kind of sound like a broken record, but in my eyes, the first facilities in the next five years, I think building a career technical training building and expanding that for our kids is very important. It would allow, you know, all different areas, electrical, plumbing, heating, welding, as well as like nursing and different classes. And that, again, that would, if we build a new building for that, that would open up the whole shop area at the school to be remodeled for junior high classrooms. So working within our building structure, just making as much space and improving that space as well and updating it as we go, it should be the number one priority in my mind.
Facilities. Somehow I knew this question would arise. Facilities have been a hot topic around here for quite a few years. And I believe the general public spoke the last election. If we do not see an influx in enrollment, our focus will remain on renovations and repairs within the front walls. A lot of which have been recently accomplished and planned in the near future. Personally, I believe we need to take a look at our vocational trades programs and space and see where improvements could be made that help out those specific programs. And maybe spark furnitures for students in trades. All right, next question goes to Nick, and this one comes from the audience. And what role do you see the board playing in curriculum decisions? And they're giving you two options. Do you side more with the trusty experts? Or do you side more with the influence by your own educational philosophy? And if you wouldn't fully trust the curriculum experts in the school, what would you look for in a curriculum that's essential for to avoid it?
Well, I guess I'm in between that. I would say what the curriculum that should be chosen is what is most engaging with the children. Like I said before, I think, you know, you can teach them trigonometry, but if they don't understand why they need to learn this, they're not going to be engaged. They're not going to care. And that results in, and, you know, low test scores. So I think the method that keeps children interested in what they're learning and why they need to learn it, that is the curriculum that needs to be implemented for all students. And it's not just, and people have different learning abilities. Not everybody learns as quick as some others. So the curriculum doesn't matter about that. It's just what the core keeps kids engaged and wanting to keep learning.
Curriculum, I feel like a lot of it has to be trust. I'm not an expert in curriculum. I'm not an educator. I think that we have really done a good job. The school has a group that reviews curriculum. They go through on a schedule, so they go through the different, so many years, they review all the curriculum and look at if something needs to be changed or something new needs to be purchased. And I feel like as a school board, that is part of the trust that we have to know that they are the experts and they do a great job. And you have to, you know, just understand the process that they do and the work they put into it because they really do spend a lot of time reviewing it and going through different types of curriculum.
Yeah, I fall somewhere in the middle, kind of like Nick said. Curriculum, it's not my expertise. However, so I would say, the question, I lean more towards the experts until results are being seen. And then you have to intervene and interject and it can go a different way. Leading towards the experts is the answer to the question.
When it comes to curriculum development, the first thing I think about is what is being measured from a curriculum results data perspective? And we have to ask ourselves as board, how does the curriculum meet that? While we don't potentially have the expertise to concretely determine that our curriculum meets that, we have to have some mental construct of what that looks like and be able to ask the approaches of the administration and even of the teachers. Do I think that we should put full trust in the administration and those developing the curriculum? I do. But I do also think that we have to, as a school board, have inquiry around the decisions that are being made. Because ultimately, it is the responsibility of the school board to adopt that curriculum. So we have to be able to speak to that and not just simply rely on falling back on the administration. We have to be able to, at some level, articulate what the curriculum is and how we came to the interpretation that was the direction we're going to go.
Next question goes to Casey first. Who has primary responsibility for K-12 students' education, parents or the school? And so I'm just going to add on, what's the role of parents in the education process? Obviously, you know, you're running to be a member of the school board. What do you see as the role of parents in their students' education?
I feel like parents should be, I mean, you're the advocate for your child. I mean, you should be asking questions, looking into why new things by the school board makes decisions. I think that's all very important. I think that the more involvement can be, whether you're volunteering at the school or just, you know, you can come and sit in on classes. I think all that helps you just see what your school is doing. And the school itself, obviously, I mean, they are the driver of education. And it is their job. That's what they're getting paid for. That's what they're trained for. So it's definitely a split thing. It's, it's, it needs to be pushed from both sides. You know, the school has to be doing what they're doing, but parents need to be there.
To recap, what's the role of parents in K-12 education?
Yeah, who has primary responsibility for K-12 students' education, parents or the school? Personally, I place more value in parents than I do the school itself. The more involvement and the more education and discipline the child sees in the house, the less the teacher or educator has to worry about. And they can progress onto things that are, you know, not necessarily taught at home. So I think involvement is key, you know. You get out of education, which put it to the remote form. And I like to see parents extremely involved, so.
I think this goes back to my response to the role of public education and specifically the partnership, that there's a shared responsibility. While the school has the day-to-day instruction, that structure and support does start at home. And there's been discipline discussed tonight and some of the stuff that happens at school that the staff and faculty have to address. Some of that, that's also where we can have that shared responsibility. But in terms of specifically who has the primary responsibility, I think it does start at home. What I will say is, in my involvement with watch dogs over the last five years, it has afforded me the chance to be even more intimately involved in the education of my children. Not being in their classrooms, but also the classrooms of other students. It's eye-opening to watch them instruct a group of twenty students who are learning at all levels across the spectrum, but they are engaging them at a common ground. And it's honestly, it's remarkable to watch. So it really boils down to that shared responsibility and that there is open communication with us as parents and with their teacher.
I believe it all starts at home. The parents need to be a good role model for the kids and push them to do better at school. If the parent doesn't believe that the school is doing a good job of taking care of their child's education, they should, they should speak up and get involved. So the school, you know, is going to have their curriculum and their rules and their values of how they instruct and how they treat the students and staff, faculty and everybody. But it does start at home and we want everybody to have a great experience at home. And I think you have to be, you have to come from a good place and you have to have support. And I think that starts at home.
All right, the next question goes to Grayman first. We've talked a little bit about growth. As a member of the Earlham School Board, what would you do to help the Earlham community school district continue to grow?
Yeah, growth can be measured in a lot of different ways, specifically numbers is what we're talking about, or test scores, or.
Open to interpretation, I think.
Open to interpretation. Obviously, you know, student enrollment. You know, growth is an important thing. If you're not growing, you're dying, you know. Especially as a small-town environment. And that's the last thing I think anybody in this community wants, you know. Once again, I refer to the chicken egg situation that happened. Unfortunately, nobody has the magic key to that. And you'd like to think this community were being proactive, but in fact, it kind of feels like we're being reactive. You know, if, simply put, you know, growth will not happen that fast, in my opinion. And so, you know, if we don't see older generations start moving out of town, I don't know how growth is even possible.
The first thing that comes to my head is partnerships and collaboration. So that can be with the city, that can be with, we have an incredible community program through Bricker Price in this town. There's opportunity for us to look at growth. Yes, numbers are important, but what resources are at our disposal now that we can leverage? So does that mean that there's a closer relationship between the city and the city council and the school board? There's strategy conversation around that? Because the school alone cannot independently make the numbers of our school grow. We have to have partnerships. And so we have to identify what those look like. And we cannot be afraid to have those difficult conversations about what that growth looks like. Do we want to grow exponentially very quickly? No, we want controlled growth. I think that's been a common theme here tonight. But without growth, we are going to become stagnant. And so we have to identify ways that we can harbor specifically with the city, with Bricker Price. Are there other civic groups that we can identify ways to do that?
Yeah, I don't, how I can help with growth as well? I voted yes on the bond. I didn't go through it, but, yeah, I think we need to partner, be closer with the city and figure out how we can get more community members in Earlham. And, yeah, we don't want to grow quick. We don't want to bust our borders, to speak. But we are, I don't know, that's a tough question. Because we are in this block, in this building, and there is no more room to go. So to grow, we have to adopt new ideas, which, you know, that bond has new ideas. Not everybody's a fan of it, but we have some property outside of town that I think should be utilized. Just because the school owns it and we're sitting on it, that's not really, not doing us any good right now. And I think we should push to utilize that property. And it might not hurt the community's pocketbooks too bad, but that should be an option that we should support too.
I know the school does have a very good relationship with the city. And I think pushing growth slow and steady with the city and figuring out how to open up some housing would be a great way to just keep our enrollment steady, not grow it slightly. I know that's, it's been an issue for years and years and we talk about it a lot and it's. it's, it's gonna take, I think, people pushing for the action and getting, giving some people to invest in some of the land around town and the city's help, you know, with either a pump station or whatever they need to do with some of the different things to, just to help our town grow. I think it's important, I agree, if, if our town is not growing, it's just not a good thing. I mean, it's, it's, Earlham is an amazing place, you've never had to combine with another school. I don't think anyone would ever have to combine with another school. And keeping our school strong is, is really the center of our community.
This question goes to Greg. I think you mentioned the property that the school owns in Northwest of Town. I've got a question about the, the property at the corner of North Chestnut and Northwest Sixth Street, just across the, the street here to the north. So if you have any to do, what would you do with this property and the property of Northwest of Town? What ideas do you have for that? How the school should best utilize those properties? And this one goes to Greg first.
So I think the, the theme that's been thrown around tonight is CTE. While I think that's a valid thought, I, I think there is the potential to get some community input. This goes back to identifying what is going to be the best use of that space. I use that with caution because we can solicit input, and then if someone, someone's input is not followed through on, then it's looked at, well, why do you ask for feedback if you don't use it? And that's, that's a very delicate balance when you start to seek public input. But it's vital for a decision like this to address the question of this because whatever's done across the street is going to have a direct impact to this building. And so what is the, in the present time, what's the most effective use? And so I know it, I don't have a specific answer to this question because it, there's, there's a lot that goes into considering what's going to be done across the street. And I don't think I'm prepared to specifically say this is the best option for Earlham School District. I think there's a lot more that needs to be considered when it comes to what that property needs to be used for.
I do have a specific answer about what I think needs to happen. Spent a lot of time on the football field, basically the concession stand. We're short on parking here, and I think we utilize this space out here for parking already, and we're, you know, track meets and, you know, large track meets and then football games. You know, they shut down this road for almost every football game, at least partially the football game. And we should be utilizing that for parking and maybe even another, you know, ticket stand or restroom on this end for, to support our, our, our track stadium and football stadium. As far as the, is it 40 acres that is outside of town? I think that should be utilized for students that are able to commute to that property. Getting younger kids out there doesn't, that seems like a real tough thing to do. You know, kids that live in town, I don't think they're gonna have an easy way getting out there. A lot of kids walk to school. I think that's a great thing. But I think, you know, some high schoolers that are able to drive out there, maybe a CTE building, some sports complex, we currently have softball and baseball fields that, that we utilize that are not on school property. I would like to change that. I think we should have full control over our facilities, and right now I don't really, I don't feel like that's the case, but I think we should utilize our space properly.
The piece of property the school owns right to the north, I, I feel like it needs to be utilized for some type of CTE building, as well as a little bit of maintenance room for, for the stonings and for just some of the equipment that the school has that they use, the tractor and a few things like that. It's storage space. Also, I mean, we, we would have plenty of room to large parking lot in the last bond. That's basically what that area was going to be used for, to improve parking, as well as a CTE building. The, the piece of land, I feel like, 40 acres, I mean, it is being utilized to a point now. It is education for our, our ag kids. They use it for, for planting crops, and they learn all the aspects of, you know, farming and planting, and so it's somewhat being utilized now and as an education purpose for them, which I think is great. But I think in the future, it can obviously be used for probably, I mean, it's, it's there just in case we really grow, I feel like, for possibly an elementary school. But I think it could definitely be used or even looked at working with the city to, to expand, maybe parks for the city over there and, and either use the, the current city property where our baseball and softball fields are and develop that to improve our softball and baseball facilities.
Yeah, another pretty complex question there. But Nick said, right, parking, I haven't heard one idea that I can get behind. I was actually for the CTE building up until we were moved to this property. I, I don't see a, a building being beneficial just because of the drainage and special restrictions there, but parking is definitely an issue, and, and it works well for that. You know, and getting into the 40 acres, I, I, I don't know if I've ever heard an idea that we can get the entire community around for that quite yet. The baseball softball thing is definitely an issue, but that's, that's really complex. It involves two different entities and, and a lot, well, three really, and, and there's a lot of red tape there too, so. Currently, what we are doing works, there is a purpose for it, I agree with Casey. Whether or not it's being utilized to its fullest value, you know, that, that's probably a good question, but I, I'm not quite sure we can get the whole community on board for one idea, and, and I sure don't have that much of a idea, so.
Right, we are nearing the end of our time, and we're gonna move into closing remarks. So just a simple question, you know, we've got an election coming up in a week. You have a chance to speak directly to the voters right now. Why should, who supports you in this election? We'll start with Nick.
Why should you vote for Nick on this? Well, I'm a heavy advocate for preparing our students for life after high school, and I think that starts in, I think that starts right here in kindergarten, you know, rural issues, creating, you know, good habits, social habits, just to create a great foundation for the children, you know. I'm a very honest, fact, fact-based person. I would, I don't know, I'll open any conversation, even if, even if you don't agree with me. I think, I think that's a huge thing, and I think you really need to be open-minded about what other people have to say, even if, even if you don't agree with them very strongly, so, that's it.
I hope I demonstrated that I, I am for Earlham. I want the best for our town, I want the best for our community, for our school, and for all the kids that come through here. It's an important thing that not, not everybody gets to experience. I hope that we can just keep building and making our town a better place. I don't want it to grow and be this giant place, but I want it to be strong and I want it to be the center of, of our community.
Yeah, why should you vote for me? First of all, hey, I'm a, I'm a proud member of this community. I've always taken a lot, I had this way I was born and raised. I did have a joke I was gonna say, but I'd like to, to create a relationship between stakeholders and board members so transparent that in two years, no one will ask that question in life. You know, that, that unity needs to become the forefront of our community. I, I'm seeing too many jads on social media, that's a, that's how big this thing is stronger. We've got to figure out a way to, to be open-minded and move forward. And, and I'm willing to, to take the time to donate to the school, the school board, and, and for the better improvement. So, thank you. Thanks for everybody coming in.
So one thing that I, that continues to roll around in my head here tonight is, I want to ensure that we're focusing on the opportunities for all of our, all of our students, whether they want to go into a career right out of high school, whether they want to go into a trade, or they want to go to post-secondary education. I want to ensure that there continues to be opportunities for every one of those paths because that's what public education is, is finding your passion and having people around you to support that path. As a first-generation college student in my family, it's something that I, I take a lot of pride in, the opportunities I've had to go to college and have the degree and the, the education I have. But watching my dad in the, the trade that he was in for 40 years and the, the pride that he had in that, there is, there's something to that as well. And so I think it's about finding the right path for each student and helping them find that passion, and that's ultimately what I want to foster, is that environment that those students can find the right path for them.
Thank you. And that concludes our school board forum this evening. I want to thank everybody for taking the time and for joining us tonight and learning more about these candidates. I want to invite you to join us in the comments for some time mainly with the candidates. Apologize to those who I did not get your questions, you have a chance to, to ask them one-on-one over the next half hour or so. And please remember to vote on Tuesday, November 4th. Polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And before we head out to the comments, as a former locally elected official myself, I believe that everybody should have the experience of serving in local elected office at least once because it gives you an appreciation for those that do. And I have nothing but admiration and respect for those that are willing to put their names on the ballot, so please join me in thanking our four candidates. Thank you, and good night.